I'd like to call to order the September 12th, 2017 session of the Hazel Park City Council. Roll call?
Mayor Keaton.
Here.
Mayor Tom Timm Webb.
Here.
Councilmember Lucero.
I'm by phone.
Councilmember Salmon.
Here.
Councilmember Holland.
Here.
That brings us to the invocation and pledge of allegiance Pastor Barry David. Please stand.
Let us pray. We thank you Father for your hand of favor sparing greater destruction of lives and property in Florida. We pray for those who have lost loved ones or their homes. Please encourage and sustain them, we pray. We are grateful for our own first responders who do a great job here along with their respective chiefs. Protect them, we pray. We're thankful for our city manager and his administrative people that run the day-to-day operations of this great city. We're grateful for our elected officials who serve with distinction and with honor and are tireless in leading this city. Tonight, we ask for your guidance and wisdom in all discussions and may all decisions be pleasing to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mayor?
Yes.
Move to approve the revised agenda.
Mr. Mayor, um, do we, did we have?
Support.
Correct.
Motion's made and supported. Discussion on the motion?
I didn't, I don't, what's the revised part, sorry?
Uh... The revised are the approval of the, uh, uh, move offer to purchase a vacant lot, approval of the MML Membership Renewal Invoice, and approve application for additional service credit.
Yeah, Your Honor, um...
Hang on one second.
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Motion is made and seconded. Discussion, any further discussion?
Yes, Your Honor, I thought item four was going to be removed.
Item four, the business license?
Yes, to go before Planning Commission first.
That's a special use, right?
Yes. Is that acceptable to the motion maker and...
Uh, Jeff Campbell is here. He has additional information on that.
This is the former pawn shop that was in existence prior to, and it's a special land use that I believe, it does not carry with the owner, it goes with the land.
No, I believe you're wrong on that. It goes with the owner. If you go back.
Okay. We'll take a look at it and we'll get back with you.
You can table item four until the next meeting.
Thank you.
So... I certainly concur with the table.
My sec, my support goes with that.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented with the exception of item four being tabled until the following meeting, and it's been seconded and discussion has been held. Is there any further discussion? Being none, is there dissension? Being none, motion carries, we have an agenda.
Mister, uh, Mister Mayor, is there anyone here from the ATS Store or from Hazel Park Auto and Detail? Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Certainly. Resolutions? We have no resolutions at this time. The administration, I had asked about a resolution on MCSU.
Yes, we'll get that for you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Mister Mayor, before we move on, I'd just like, for the audience, clarification that Councilman Lucero is via phone because he is at a conference at Holland, it's our fall MML conference, and I'm actually driving up in the morning as well as another council person, so we'll be there to join him tomorrow, and he's part of the MML Committee and does a great job at that.
Yeah, for the, for the record, he is part of the overall organizational Board of Directors, so he succeeded me with that seat. This is the first time a city has succeeded itself with a seat on the Board of Directors at the Michigan Municipal League in the history of the league. So, congratulations.
Just for clarification, that's why we're doing it by phone. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. That brings us to civic announcements. Are there any civic announcements? Yes.
Mister Mayor, Councilmen, I'm here again this month to invite you guys to the first responders' party this month. It's the 24th, and I'd like you all to come, somebody to represent the government of the Hazel Park. I've got about 15 companies who are represented and several churches. It'd be nice if some or all of you can attend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could you, yeah, could you?
24th.
Just, it's the 24th?
Yeah.
Okay. At 2:00 PM. It's, uh, at Serenity Church? Okay. Thank you very much. Any other civic announcements? Civic announcements?
To the Hazel Park Historical Museum will be open the 21st from 6:00 to 8:00 PM located at 45 East Pearl, and encourage folks to come out. And then Wednesday, the 27th, the Creative Arts in the school district are going to offer STEAM, which is Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math at the museum. So, a lot of the projects that they did, there's a mini makers fair, and that's open to the public, and it's going to run from 6:00 to 8:00 as well, and if you're not interested in the projects, you can tour the museum. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other civic announcements? Civic announcements? Civic announcements, being none. We'll close civic announcement, public discussion. We have Justin Denakis?
Denaskis.
Denaskis. Ah, it was close.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, Justin Denaskis with Denaskis Consulting Development, 169 West Clarkson Road, Orient Township. Just thought I'd come before you this evening, given the agenda items that you have in front of you, to offer up any insight I can give you into what the state may be doing on the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, or maybe some neighboring communities. Just a little background, our firm worked integrally on these package of bills and continue to work with our Department of License and Regulatory Affairs and others on it. Myself, some of our staff were at the Marijuana Licensing Board meeting just this afternoon, and so I can share just a couple of broad strokes just for you, and if there's any questions or I can continue to be a resource. But so you're aware of and commend you on the work that you've done in the subcommittee, so I know you're pretty well informed on the overall subject matters, but what's happening, transpiring next? The next big thing will be the emergency rules for you folks. So, we'll have the emergency rules set by the department. This is set by state statute how our rules are promulgated, but given the short timeframe for as we're rolling out the industry, we're going to operate under emergency rules initially. And so, the public draft is due to come out hopefully by the end of October, early November at the latest for those public drafts. And Director Egerton, the Director of License and Regulatory Affairs Department, has publicly stated that they're going to be more or less, for lack of a better term, a set of skinny rules, so we're focusing on the public health, safety, and welfare, but given the magnitude of regulating a whole new industry, they're not going to get into all the minutia and all the details, if you will, that a markets that mature, like if you go to Colorado, okay, don't expect us to have rules and regulations that developed off the bat. So, that's one of the biggest developments. They've set today some estimates for folks on their fees. You folks are well aware that you can charge up to $5,000 annually and so forth. Just for your reference, it's going to be around $4,500 to $8,000 that applicants will pay to apply. That's just to offset the background checks and other things set in statute, and the licensing fees for those applicants. So, you're kind of aware of the economics of what your licenses are going to look at, anywhere from $10,000 to $57,000 is what they'll pay for their license actually annually to the board, which will fluctuate depending on how many licenses. So, even though it's been kind of hurry up and wait, the Licensing Board is anxious and they're doing everything they can on the rules and regulations. Today, they also announced the work groups that will be working with the department and the Advisory Board once set and the other stakeholders. So, there's five different work groups for each of the five classes of licenses, the grower, processor, provisioning center, safety compliance facility, and the transporter. So, we have good representation there, there are about 17 to 18 member boards. I have the pleasure of serving on the growing one, they were just announced this afternoon, and others, so we can kind of, your condo is those developed. So, lots happening to regulate this new industry, but the good news is, from your standpoint, it's more you're looking at in the right preview of it, it's really a local planning and zoning play with your own regulatory piece. Try not to get too caught up on the rules for the industry. They're going to have to operate by those, of course, just like all your other regulated industries, your restaurants, you know, auto shops, dry cleaners, all these different regulated industries. But they're moving steadfast, and the goal is to issue licenses in early 18. As you know, the, you can start applying on December 15th of this year, and then there is the 90 days that local municipalities have that once someone's applied to respond back with copies of your ordinance, any related zoning app, you know, maps and so forth showing your areas where you're allowing them and which licenses. So, with that, you know, issue of licenses probably not to the end of the first quarter with that 90-day window kind of pushing things back. But the goal is to hand them out in hand by, you know, end of the first quarter, and they're even going as far as, you know, going on a road show and showing folks how they want the different forms that are going to be required for the applicants, how to interact with the front-end application online system. So, the whole goal, and again, I really commend you for where you're at because you're right where you need to be as it relates to, as the industry moves forward. Before you know it, these folks are gathering all their documents starting, you know, in the next month or so and starting to apply, and obviously the local approvals, you know, a big piece of it. So, with that, happy to answer any questions or so forth, but thought it'd be kind of pertinent so you can see what's happening behind the scenes, or, well, in front of the scenes, what's happening with the industry as it further develops.
Is there anyone who has any question? Okay. You say that they're going to first function under emergency rules, and the emergency rules you said would be ready by October?
Yeah, so, public draft, end of October, begin November at the latest, and so, and then shortly thereafter, that would be firmly adopted before the December 15th.
So, before December 15th, they'll have the promulgated?
Emergency rules, yeah.
Emergency rules.
Yeah.
When are the...
Six months, they said, they anticipate.
Yep, the way our state's set up, and this is for most of, all of our regulated industry, the way state statute, and I'm not an attorney, but work in the space, so with that said, the way it works is the regular rules process, about a 12 to 18-month process, which will be going forward, and we're working on now with those work groups and others, but it's a 12 to 18-month process because of the public meetings that are required, the different stakeholders groups, the notices that must go out, and the ultimate legislative part of it as well with our Joint Committee on Rules and Regulations. There's a number of steps to it. So, given the industry starting, you know, you can apply December 15th is what was set in statute, they have to set up some rules, and so this, just like all our other regulated industries, they're going to use the emergency rules because of timing. Essentially, the department develops them, and then with the Attorney General's Office and the Governor's Office gets the stamp of approval, and they'll go into effect for up to six months, and you can get one extension for another six months of those emergency rules. So, there's a quite possibility we'll be operating on those emergency rules for 12 months as all the while they're working on the promulgation of the permanent rules.
So, you said that the emergency rule is going to be a condensed version of, of the rules. Have you had a chance to re, to look at our ordinance?
Yes, yeah, very, very well done, as you look at how you're looking at from a regulatory piece on the side of it. Yeah, I think a lot of your Ts are crossed, Is are dotted, you're, I think you have the right, you know, optics, if you will. Don't over-regulate it, but you want to have some control as you're looking at through your special use versus like a special land use, special permit, and so you have some say in who the applicants are and some control. So, as we're looking at how the other area communities are developing there, as I'd say, you're, you're right on par.
So, we're, we're not looking at any major changes based on the rule process, probably?
No, and Director Egerton has said it publicly, not to paraphrase or anything, but, and it's throughout the department, we're trying to get the word out there and through the different leagues that your folks are a part of, saying that, really, there's nothing in the rules that are really going to affect as it relates to a planning and zoning decision as you look to allow these, not allow these, how and where. Not saying there's anything that could affect your regulatory piece. Yes, if they came out with something and said there's a minimum for this license type, but they're really not talking, it's more safety and, you know, building code stuff. But so, really, there's nothing much that should affect your preview on how you promulgate and cite them, just like we constantly look at the regulatory update. Every day our regulated industries are getting changed on their rules. It's not going to affect really how you plan and zone for them.
Okay, well, thank you very much, those are the only questions.
You know, Mister Mayor, for the record, Justin's been quite helpful to us during the drafting of this ordinance, so he has seen it. I don't know if he's seen it in its final form yet, but he's been a great information resource for us.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there any other public discussion? Any other public discussion? Public discussion, being none, we'll close public discussion. Brings us to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
And supported. Discussion on the motion?
For the record, that does not include item four.
That's true. No discussion on the motion? Is there any dissension to the motion? Being none, motion carries, we have the consent agenda approved. Administrative reports. We are, it is the approval of ordinance to amend Title V Business License and Regulations by adding Chapter 5.04 Medical Marijuana Facility Licensing Act, Sections 5.04.010 through 5.04.090 on second reading.
This is an amendment from the first reading according to the comments that was made at the first meeting. Again, the zoning ordinance will be forthcoming. I have been working with Mr. Clowitzer and trying to see facilities which will help us in the drafting of the zoning ordinance, certain regulatory things that will come up, like Justin was talking about, would be like waste products, what to do with them, how to store certain chemicals, wastewater from the growing organizations. Those are things that, you know, we want to be more specific about for the safety of our residents.
So, those could be accomplished in the zoning procedure?
That's correct.
And any changes due to regulations, we could adopt at a later date. So, this is our foundation and hopefully won't change that significantly.
That's a good way to put it.
We get updates by email regularly, either from the state or from the different groups that are working with the state. It's, it's a constant change, and we always have to look at that to make sure that it doesn't affect anything that we need to change.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, this was put forth for approval on second reading. What's your pleasure?
Salute, Mayor.
Motion is made?
Support.
And supported. Discussion on the motion?
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
On page two, just for clarification, under growers, it says the number of each of the licenses listed herein shall be limited to three each unless otherwise determined by resolution of the City Council. And then it shows grower, and then three different classes. To be clear, that is one grower in each class or three growers of one class, but not three growers in each class, is that correct?
I believe it is three growers in each class.
So, there could be nine growers then?
That's correct. And at this point, we don't know whether or not the state is going to say that those can be combined or not in a single building. I know there's been talk, but I haven't seen anything yet, and if something that comes down, we'll address that when it comes.
Okay. I also have a question on page four. Under outdoor storage, under the letter lowercase i, outdoor storage or discharge of toxic, flammable, or hazardous materials into city sewer, sewer is prohibited. That isn't clear, but it should perhaps indicate that storm drains should be added? Because someone could drain, as we recently had a situation where businesses were draining out of their building into backyards of residences.
Including but not limited to storm rate drains.
Right.
I can add that.
And then, under lowercase k, that at the time of the application, the applicant's proposed facility is not within 500 feet of a K through 12 public school building. Is there some reason why we have excluded private schools?
That was something that was discussed at the last meeting and was agreed that it would be the K through 12.
Okay, but I don't recall us seeing public schools, but, okay.
We could also just put an or after 12 there, and that would cover private or public.
And then, uh, did we discuss places of worship when we were talking about this?
The state was...
The administration, we, we would rather not include places of worship in this.
The state was talking about places of worship, but I think they're going to stick with the school.
The state?
Was talking about it. They had a whole line of different things that they were going to prohibit you from being in, which actually would have prohibited us from having any at all by the time they were done, but I think that they came to their senses, at least at this point, and so far, I've only seen the, the schools.
Okay, I'm only asking questions now, I'm not necessarily demanding changes. On page five, D, secure transportation facility, lowercase e, no outdoor storage. We're talking about vehicles here, would that mean that the vehicles would have to be parked indoors?
No, that would be addressed by the zoning ordinance also.
Okay.
We want to make sure that none of the things, what usually happens, and when we, when we don't prohibit outdoor storage, is you'll see gas stations and they'll have a bunch of tires and chemicals and everything else, and it's, it becomes a place for people to put their products out there and enlarge it.
Understand.
We don't want to have that.
Okay. And my last one is on page eight, under city responsibility. We have numbers two and three under section, well, under city responsibility, but we don't have a section one, but we do have subsection A and B. Should there be a one there somewhere?
The one right before the word "the," the city. Thank you.
And that's all I have. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Ready?
I had something.
Go ahead.
On page five, under, uh, provisioning center, we had added before F, we had added F, lowercase F. I think it should read, "Security and floor plan for indoor storage must be provided." We should scratch "of" chemicals. This is indoor storage, period. This is a provisioning center, very likely not to be having chemicals there, but probably having a product there that we would want to be storing. And that was the original intent of my amendment, but before it was just, "Security and floor plan for indoor storage must be provided."
I'm anticipating that he's saying on page five...
It's page five, page five, provisioning center. You know, capital C, provisioning center, lowercase f.
Got it.
Is he looking at then the inventory of where it's going to be stored then and put out? And not changed?
I'm sorry, could not understand all of it.
The question is, are you looking at the storage of chemicals, product, is that anything else?
I would just say, all we have to do is strike "of" chemicals, and then it would read just fine the way it is. Security and floor plan for indoor storage must be provided. That's it.
So, would that...
Remember the storing, security floor plan.
Would that include all the products and everything else so that they can't change it then on the floor plan?
That includes, that sentence includes all storage.
I think what he's saying...
Very...
Hold on, I have to take the microphone. From the phone, Andy. I think what he's saying is he wants an encompassing storage plan that would include a plan for the storage of everything, including chemicals and anything else that might be stored in the premises. Is that correct, Andy?
Well, as a provisioning center, they're not likely to be storing chemicals, and we don't want it to be reading that we're only interested in them storing the chemicals. We want them, this is the security and floor plan for what they will store. They are a provisioning center, they're not a growing or processing center, they're a provisioning center.
So, you would...
Their products should be, is what we're talking about. All we need to do is scratch "of" chemicals. Scratch that, and as far as I'm concerned, this sentence reads just fine.
But hypothetically, if they were storing chemicals, that would be included in any storage plan, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but so would mops and buckets and anything else they stored.
It's a provisioning center, though. If we want to say "of" their product...
Now, that, I can understand why we would need to know where their product was stored. So, it could read, "Goodbye."
Mister Mayor, I believe we lost Andy, so bear with us for a moment.
Yes. I mean, it, it could read, uh, that the storage of product...
I just need clarification as to what he's referring to.
Product and/or chemicals.
I think Andy seems to think that there aren't any chemicals.
I couldn't tell you, I ain't...
You don't know.
Know nothing about marijuana.
Kind of a mixed bag on that. Okay, are you back?
Sorry, I don't know where, I don't know where I left off or where I cut out.
We're still talking about, we kind of went on hiatus when you dropped.
Yeah, sorry. I had no idea when it dropped. So, what I'm saying is, go back up to page four, under grower facility, A, lowercase d. That whole sentence was just removed and added into the provisioning center and became provisioning center F, lowercase f. What I'm saying is, it does not make any sense to think that the provisioning center, which is the retail location, is going to have the chemicals there and that we're only interested in their floor plan and security plan for storing chemicals, which they aren't likely to have.
Okay, the...
The floor plan of storage was about the product, which is the very expensive stuff that we wanted to know about.
Can we just substitute chemicals for products, Andy?
Uh, I think you could just go ahead with this suggestion that says "storage plan", and we can use that to encompass it. I think just putting the word "storage plan" in there would be fine. I, I understand his concern. I, I, he, he may be overly concerned, but I understand where he's coming from. The administration... The administration will be fine with just deleting the word chemicals and going with storage plan. We're fine.
No, 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 that's not what, that wouldn't read right. All we, all I'm suggesting is scratching two words, "of" chemicals. Scratch those two words, "of" chemicals.
That's what I said.
While you wanted to throw in "plan" there, "plan" is in the word earlier in the sentence.
The "plan" is already there.
Yes, "plan."
It's already there.
Just remove "of" chemicals.
Right. Sorry, I haven't even moved out of my chair, I'm sitting at the desk, and I'm, sorry, it's hanging up.
Okay, we're looking at this.
That's all I had.
Removing "of" chemicals, that's all you had?
Yes.
Okay, we had those minor changes. So it's presented for our approval based on the rewrite?
With those changes.
With those changes?
I'll make a, amend my motion.
Motion amended to include the changes. Second?
Support.
Supported. Discussion? Be none. Dissension to the motion? Be none. Motion carries. That brings us to boards and commissions. Nothing on the agenda. Tabled items? Nothing on this agenda, however, item four will be on the next agenda. New business, are any new business to be brought to the floor? New business? New business?
Just for the record, Jeff Campbell and I had an opportunity to meet with the board, the boards and commission members from the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Downtown Development Authority. We had a pretty well-attended meeting, and we got to brief them on some of the new businesses that are coming to the city of Hazel Park. And we're very excited to announce that LG Electronics will be locating in the Tri-County Commerce Center, and that will mean up to 200 jobs here in the city of Hazel Park. Mr. Campbell and I are looking forward to working with Michigan Works and hosting an employment fair so that we can do everything that we can do to give Hazel Park residents the best chance that we can to apply for those jobs.
Very good.
Very exciting.
Any other new business to be brought to the floor?
With regard to the council photographs, I have, just to get five more frames, I showed Councilman Selman, all of them that I have had restained and got new frames for. If anybody wants to see them, they are in the conference room on the first floor down here, ready to be put up, and they will be put up before the next meeting.
Jan has been actually staining some of the frames. She's really worked hard on this to try to make this a successful process. We did find one duplicate council picture where they had the mayor pro tem wrong, so we may be donating that to the historical commission, so they can have that over there. So, a picture of the long council, so anyways.
Okay. Be no further new business. Communications from department heads? Any communication from department heads? Communications?
Jeff, Lacy, want to, have you anything to say?
Communications from city manager?
Yes, unfortunately, this will be my first MML convention that I am missing and for about three years, so I will advise Andy and Mike and Beth to remember to reinforce at the Michigan Municipal League that Michigan's system of municipal finance is fundamentally broken, and it-
Who is coming?
It is the league's primary responsibility to advocate for changes to this system. To that end, Jeff Campbell and I had a chance to meet with representatives from business and industry and academia and other governmental entities such as the Michigan Townships Association and the Michigan Association of Counties. We met with the Mott Foundation in an attempt to try to get them to fund an educational campaign in the state of Michigan to alert our residents to just how bad a problem this is. So we look forward to working with the league on that process in the future, and please extend my regards to the league executive director and their staff, they do an outstanding job.
Communications from city attorney?
Nothing for me.
Jan, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Nothing from Jan. Communications from mayor and council? Councilmember LaCuro?
Thank you for putting up with this phone call out here in Holland. We, it's interesting, I missed mentioning this, we did get an update from Chris Hackbars and Tony McGinnity about OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits, and revenue sharing, they've got a, some draft legislation, just received this this afternoon, so I will forward that to everybody. I want to just thank everybody for putting up with the bad connection. Schools out, watch out for the kids, and watch out for bicyclists. Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. Councilmember Selman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was saddened to note of the passing of former mayor Ed Swanson of Madison Heights. Mayor Swanson was mayor in Madison Heights for, oh, 14 or 16 years prior to Mayor Hartwell, and, and he was very active in his community and, and a very good citizen and a good neighbor. And I was unhappy to hear of his passing, but Mayor Swanson was well into his 80s, and, and I'm quite sure that we have already arranged to send flowers, so-
We have.
I also want to commend city attorney Andrum on the fabulous work she has done on getting the historical pictures that used to be up on the wall, and I am so much looking forward to seeing them back up on the wall of previous councils from 1942 on. And I, I would encourage folks to stop in and look at them at our next meeting and, and learn a little bit about the history of our little town from them, and also to visit our, our historical museum, because it has, it has a wealth of knowledge about our little place here in southeast Oakland County. We border on two counties and actually four cities, because there's a little bit of us that borders on Royal Oak even. We are, we are often not noticed by folks, but we are, we are doing all right. I am very proud to be in, from Hazel Park and proud of our community, proud of our residents, proud of our, our city employees, and proud of our, our administration, and proud of the people I serve with sitting up here. And I will end up by saying, if you love somebody, oh, please tell them so, and if you have children, hug them every day and tell them you love them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Beth Howland?
Thank you all for coming out tonight. I would like to extend my condolences to the family of Lisa Crouch-Johnson and the passing of her father, and to wish comfort and strength to her and her entire family. Also, I'd like to thank the residents and our, our vet rescue partner, vet partner, all about animals. Last Saturday, we held a vaccination clinic at the DPW. Once again, Steve moved all the equipment out, opened the barn up, and we had 164 pets receive their vaccinations. I was told close to 30 microchips were implanted. Quite a few people checked to confirm their microchips were still in the pet, they hadn't disappeared somehow, and that they were valid. And our deputy clerk, or soon-to-be clerk, Jimmy Finkley, was there issuing approximately 35 pet licenses. So with the two clinics this year, that brings us to close to 500 vaccinations offered, well over 100 licenses, and about 75 microchips, so it's outstanding. So appreciate it, all the community for coming out. We had some crazy dogs there, you knew when the huskies were entering the property, and the beagles, but there were no issues, all the dogs behaved and all the people did, too. So thank you all for coming out, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Mayor pro tem, Mike Webb?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too want to give my condolences to the Bonnie Crouch and Lisa Crouch and family for the passing of Bill. Knew them, knew them well, still, you know, knew Bill well, and I know the family very well as well. And my condolences to Ed Swanson and his family. Got to know Ed over time, going to different events and talking to him.